The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's 6:45, and I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the joint meeting, Board of Finance and City Council, for Tuesday, May 12th. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
For our viewing public, we do have a staggered meeting tonight. We have several members of the Board of Finance and City Council that are appearing, video conferencing in, and we have a few members here in chambers as well, holding down the floor at City Hall. So if you see a different composition than what you're used to, that is the reason. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular joint meeting from April 14th, 2020.
Move approval.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Are there any questions, concerns, or clarifications needed on the April 14th meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Second item is the consent calendar for items 2A through G. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any members of the joint meeting would like removed? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval, second.
The motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3 is to make an additional appropriation of $3,175 within the equipment building sinking fund for security improvements at the probate court funded by contributions from the town of Plymouth.
Motion to approve, second.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 4, to transfer $15,505 within the equipment building sinking fund for security improvements at the probate court.
Move approval, second.
Motion made.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5 is to transfer $17,500 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfers out special revenue.
Move approval, second.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item 6, to make an additional appropriation of $17,500 within the special grants and donations fund for the city match of the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Grant.
Motion to approve, second.
The motion has been made and seconded, is there any questions or comments?
No, I'm gonna have to bring, well, maybe you can bring it for me.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7, to transfer $50,000 from the general fund contingency account to the claims deductible account.
Move approval, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8 is the monthly revenue and expense report presented by Controller Diane Waldron, who is on our video conference this month.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me, because I am not going through the computer?
We can hear you.
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay. Okay, so, just wanna go through where we are right now through the end of April. One of the things that I really wanted to look at was our current tax collections actually are slightly higher percentage-wise than we were last year at this time. We're at 99.8% of our current levy versus 99.6% last year, which is roughly $5.7 million more in tax revenue. The prior year collections are also doing very well, also at 102%, and our motor vehicle supplement is at 133.1% of our budget, or 1.86 million. One of the things that concerned me when I looked at the motor vehicle supplement is that we are actually at the same dollar level as we were last year at this time, and we should be a little bit better percentage-wise. So we're approximately $150,000 behind where we were last year at this time. I talked to the tax collector, we've been looking at reports, and we actually think it could be due to timing of when some of the receipts came in. She did run a report for me right after I prepared this report, and it looks like as we're going into May, everything is more on track, so we will keep a close eye on that. Our building permit revenue, again, is coming in strong, we are exceeding last year's level. Same thing with conveyance fees and the investment earnings. One of the things that I did wanna talk about a little bit, our police private duty is actually about $500,000 lower than last year. You won't see that in that report, because we budget conservatively in these blank items, because it's actually tied to how much private duty the officers do on construction projects. There is a corresponding expenditure against this as well, which is also in line with the $500,000 reduction that we're seeing this year. So at this point, it's nothing to be concerned about, these are actually, it's actually coming in relatively well in comparison to the cost. I know when I sent the report out, one of the things that we were working on was our FEMA costs and looking at the cost that we had for our COVID-19 expenditures. At the time I prepared this report, we were just getting everything ready to spend up to the state as far as an estimate, and the estimate that we sent up to them of our costs through the end of June was approximately $1.36 million. That cost includes everything for the Board of Education as well that we sent up to them. One of the things that I did not report here is our estimated revenue loss that we anticipate is in the area of $305,000, and that is mostly parks and recreation fees due to programs that aren't going to happen, some water fees, which does not affect the general fund, and some senior center fees. So as we get, as we've been getting all of the reports from all of the departments, we've been watching those costs, and actually, we do look at where they are trending, their actual is trending to what they projected in these numbers that we put together. So so far, everything is tracking in line. Just to give you a comparison of the $1.36 million in COVID-related expenses we projected through June 30th, through our first reporting period, which ended last week, the actual cost that we have for FEMA is $280,000, and COVID costs, in total, of that total, $94,000 is labor, and the balance is all for materials and supplies that we've been purchasing. So we are on track, everybody, all of the departments, and I wanna thank all of the departments, and particularly my staff, Skip Gillis, Robin Manuel, and I know Sharon Jacob, and working very hard on getting all these costs and making sure they're coming in as detailed and with all of the information that we need. So we're hoping that we'll, you know, we'll have all of the costs, and there won't be too many question costs once we submit those reports. With regard to the Board of Education, we are working very closely with them as well through all of this. We do know that there will be some savings as we get towards the end of the year, and as we had talked about during the budget process, we are anticipating that any cost savings from the closure of the schools will be either carried over in that 1% carryover reserve that we talked about, or used to offset towards, use it towards surplus. Couple of other things that I just wanted to mention, we did, over the last couple of weeks, and another Board of Finance did talk about this at their last meeting, is we actually did put into place a new contract for the police department to have the, their parking ticket collection software interfaced with the Department of Motor Vehicles. And what that will do is it will work the same way our tax collections do with regard to our motor vehicle taxes. Anybody that has any tax, motor vehicle taxes, and now parking tickets, will be transmitted up to the state, and anyone that goes to register their vehicles, they will also not be able to, if they have any outstanding parking tickets and taxes, which has been the case for a while, but now we're adding the parking tickets on that as well. So we do anticipate that there will be some additional revenues coming in for that as soon as that gets up and running. I know the Board of Finance and the proposed budget, they did include an additional amount, increased that revenue line item for parking fees. Not a lot, we wanted to go at it a little bit slowly and be a little conservative, but I think that we will see some revenues coming in on those parking ticket revenues. And then earlier tonight, the Board of Finance did approve, moving forward, with contracts for lockbox collections. We are moving our lockbox collection from Webster Bank to People's Bank, and I know the tax collector's been working on that very aggressively. People's Bank, there will be a lot more options for people to be able to pay their taxes once we have that system up and running. So that is something that will be going into place for July 1st. There will be a lot of efficiency gains as well as a cost effectiveness of putting that in place. And then the only other one thing to report on, we're really working hard again on the revenue side of it, and we are putting in a contract agreement for our private duty, any private duty that's still contracted, there will be an agreement in place, and we're also looking to have credit card payments for that as well, to help get those revenues in sooner also. And I think with that, not too much else to report, I know the auditors have been in contact with us, seems like that process never stops, and the budget of adoption is set for May 26th, immediately following the Board of Finance meeting. So with that, if anyone has any specific questions, I will take them.
I have a question, Diane.
Yes.
It's Marie O'Brien. With what we are continuing to learn about reopening of the economy, both locally, statewide, and nationally, are you comfortable that we are assessing what the Bristol Burlington Health District needs might be over this next year, in particular, as people are talking about the responsibilities that local authorities will have to do contact tracing?
Well, they have, Bristol Burlington Health District has not come to me with anything specific, I don't know if the mayor has anything that she wants to comment specific to the health district. I do know the numbers that I did give you with regards to what we estimated for the, to send up to the state to OPM, that did include the Bristol Burlington Health District cost. At that time, though, I don't, I don't think, I would have to confirm this, that it would have included any cost for contact tracing, but I can confirm that for you, and we can get back to you on that if you would like.
Yeah, I would appreciate it if we could just update, just so that we, again, can stay in the forefront of handling this pandemic as we have already. Thank you.
Through the chair, this is Cheryl, I have a question, and I know that a lot of the courts are closed as well, but I can't help but walk past the fields of Green Hills and just realize we have the prime opportunity to fix that geothermal. Do you think that our next Board of Finance meeting, we could get an update on where things are with this case and this matter, please?
We've actually received some updates about that very recently, so I think it would be appropriate if we had Attorney Cliff to give a brief update based on what's happened as, as recent as today.
Yeah, good evening, can you hear me okay? Okay, so, we were on a conference call this morning with Judge McCauser, who will, was pre TRYing this matter for us, and there was, there's still some discovery to do, this was scheduled to go down for a trial in June, with the jury selection taking place in June, and then proceeding to a trial, but because the, as the situation, as you know, a lot of the court docket has been backlogged, we were given kind of an opportunity of if we were to not hold out for our right to a jury trial, and instead agree to a bench trial, that we might get it heard a little bit sooner, probably by the end, before the end of the year. If we hold out for our jury trial, then we're likely looking at trial to start in 2021. So I've listened to the judge carefully, and it appeared to me that even with our foregoing our right to a jury trial, he still could not guarantee that we would be, have, have a trial all that quickly. And also, I got an opportunity to observe firsthand some of the, some of what I, what I consider to be somewhat dilatory actions of some of the defendants, and knowing that, you know, after we got off with the, with all the other, obviously, all the other parties and with the judge, I had some further discussion with our lead counsel on that, Attorney Rosenthal from Erosian Nassau Law Firm in Hartford, that specializes in this. And we, his recommendation and mine was that we did not feel that the possibility of having this trial start sooner justified giving up our right to a jury trial. We feel that juries are more, would be more sympathetic to us, so that was my recommendation. I brought the superintendent and the mayor up to date on the results of that, and so that's how we're proceeding at the moment.
Are there any other questions? Yes.
Just a comment about, while you're still there?
Sure.
So you talk about '21, do we have any idea of beginning, end, or?
I don't think anybody is in a position to say, obviously, the first priority for the courts is to be sure that criminal trials are dealt with first and foremost, and that was made very clear. The, the civil docket is a little bit further down, and so, again, and for a lot of other reasons I don't wanna get into, because it involves, you know, the personalities of various parties, we just thought that holding out the hope that we're gonna get this heard sooner and, and forego our right to a jury trial did not make sense.
Okay.
But I can't predict, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
As long as we understand that every, every month we delay, something else could go wrong there, and it's gonna cost us more money.
Well, that's, and that's been made clear to the parties. Now, I will give you, just as an example, there was a lot of legal jockeying over the, the deposition of one of the defendant's experts.
Yep.
Who happens to be an elderly person, I believe in his late 80s.
Yes.
Who lives in New Hampshire, and just trying to get the, that defendant's counsel to agree on the protocols for that was, it was very difficult to do that. So I think that the judge will have to actually order how this is gonna occur, which I don't see frankly what the big deal was, but, you know, it's our decision that we need to, and according to our attorney, we need to depose this guy, so we know, we know in advance what he's going to say. So I wish I could say that this is gonna happen soon, but I'm afraid all bets are off.
It's just too bad, because with schools being closed, they could get a start.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Unfortunately, that's not, that's not gonna work.
But, but I think that it was brought home, that the further this goes, the longer this goes, the greater will be our claim. That's, that was made very clear to the parties.
Thank you.
Can I ask another question?
Can I ask another question?
And this just popped into my head, but what, what happens, we know we have to do a fix,
we know what that fix is, do we jeopardize our position by going ahead and doing the fix and then recoup our dollars? I mean, does that change the whole court case?
No.
I just see this opportunity, and it's, the school has struggled with this system for so long.
Sure. I would say to the contrary, everything that we do, and that is justified, and it certainly is justified, excuse me, I'm sorry about that, I thought I, it's my mom, I gotta tell her, I gotta take this later.
Fucking mother.
That's the one call that can still get through when I put it on do not disturb, sorry about that. No, I was, I think that it does actually help us that it shows the validity, we kind of validate our damages by having to do these constant fixes in order to keep this thing going, and then the second thing it does for us, because we've gotta pay for it, it does quantify our claims and our damages, so I don't believe it would in any way hurt us.
I think her question was to do the entire fix.
To do the entire fix.
Not just what we've been doing, to actually go in and replace the systems.
Yeah, I would have to leave that more to the experts, you know, if you, if you exceed, you know, what is a reasonable fix, you know, we may jeopardize our case, but again, I would leave that more to the experts.
Well, gonna have to, I had a long talk with Peter Fusco yesterday, as a matter of fact, on this topic, and he's gonna have to hire an engineer, in addition to the expert engineer he had.
To do our own fix.
To do, to redesign the fix, frankly, because you can't, can't just go up and start replacing the pipe, it's gonna be, has to be totally engineered, so maybe that's a place to start, so at least whenever the court case takes place, and we have some idea what kind of money we're talking about, or what kind of money, what information you need relative to what kind of money we're talking about.
Sure.
Ready to go here.
Sure, well, I'm, I believe that we have our experts lined up, so we do know what the problem is and what does need to be fixed. I, I cannot really at this time answer whether it is advisable to go ahead and make all of the changes that we believe is necessary or not. That, that's a good question, you know, and I'll consult with Attorney Rosenthal on that point, I can certainly get back to you on that if you would like.
We're talking about millions here.
Yeah, we are, and we certainly wanna be careful.
Okay. Commissioner Lamath.
Yeah, I agree with, with both Commissioner Tebow and Chairman Smith, I, I find it actually kind of troubling that we're sitting here on our hands, you know, continuously throwing Band-Aids on a, clearly something that needs a heart transplant, and why we're not moving forward. Either way, money is gonna have to be put out, and
Right.
As Commissioner Tebow had mentioned, you know, there's a fix that's necessary, and whether we're putting that money out, or we're recouping it, or we have to put out a little more of them, whatever the problem is, we got a building that needs to be heated.
Well, I would put it, I would put it this way, I mean, in a sense, what you're saying is maybe we need to roll the dice a little, and that we're going to put up probably millions of dollars, that's gotta come from somewhere, and we're gonna make a fix.
I'm not suggesting that we roll the dice, I'm suggesting that we get a, a reasonable engineered solution and fix the problem.
Right.
To me, that's not rolling the dice, because at the end of the day, we have a, a misfunctioning heating system that everybody's known about for quite some time. If that's not gonna affect the case going forward, I would think that is just a simple solution. And I'm not saying it's not gonna be expensive, but the fact is, we're continuously spending money to put a Band-Aid on this thing, let's fix it once and stop spending extra money.
Well, again, I don't know if that is something that's advisable, we are, we know what's, we're pretty sure we know what's wrong, we have our claim in court as to who is at fault, or what we think the problem is. They're fighting amongst themselves as to who's really to blame, there's all kinds of cross complaints going back and forth, but the money would have to come from somewhere if we were to go out and we were gonna say, you know, we're gonna now redo this whole thing, we're talking about a substantial amount of money. It is, in a sense, and I beg to differ, it is, in a sense, rolling the dice a bit, because we don't know how the court is going to, is going, is going to rule on this, and whether we will get all of the money that we're asking for here. So it's a little bit of a, of a gamble to do that, but it is something that we can certainly consider.
Well, let me present this question to you then, let's say that the court ruled against us.
Or we didn't get that what we thought we were entitled to.
Are we not gonna fix the, the building, regardless of whether we have to fix it or not?
I would think we would still do that.
And at some source, at some point in time, an engineer, forget the lawyers and the courts, the engineers obviously know there's an issue and where the issue lies.
Right.
I hardly think that this has escaped them.
So, so it's sort of like when you start replacing things, all right, and you replace something that, of a company, that it is adjudicated that, gee, maybe they weren't the ones at fault, then we don't get reimbursed for that. See what, see what the issue is there?
But was it broken in the first place?
Well, that's to be determined in court, right?
Well, here, here's the problem, this thing could last for another five years.
No, it's not gonna last five years.
Then let's, then let's say we get a favorable ruling, how long's it gonna take to collect all that money? You know, nobody's sitting there with a bank account ready to hand over.
They have insurers.
Well, yeah, but the insurance doesn't coughen up real quick either. So what I'm saying is, either way, we're sitting on a period of time here.
No question, no question about it. But I will do this, I will, I will ask our counsel if, and our legal, our experts, our engineering experts, because I'm not an engineer, if, do we know exactly what we need to do? Have we, are, are we 100% sure that we've pinned it down to these components, and that these are the people who are gonna be found to be legally responsible, and that we will get reimbursed, and that we will recoup our losses if we go ahead and we do this? I'm all, I'm all in, all right, but I don't know the answer tonight, I can't, I cannot speculate as to whether that's an advisable course of action or not. Look, we're all impatient, we're all impatient about this, but as long as we, we make sure that there's no safety issues, I mean, that's the paramount, in my opinion, and we keep, we keep this, we keep this going, and we make sure that whoever is responsible ultimately pays, and that's my goal.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Marie, you can go first.
Hey there.
Thank you. Attorney Cliff, with what's happening with COVID-19 and the federal government looking at funding and investing in lots of infrastructure projects, it dawns on me that there might in fact be some alternative ways in which the construction industry, including the insurers, attorneys, others, might handle some of these issues. Is it possible that you could ask your outside legal consultant as to whether there's anything going on in construction law that we might anticipate could in fact benefit us in this particular case? Just as there is in the insurance industry in certain segments, there are always, whether they're middlemen, or whether they're, they are a new, a new entities, new parties that come forward to try to alleviate some of these situations, there might in fact be something in, available to us in this next year?
It's absolutely worth a, a query, and I will make that query as long, as well as the, the queries that I've received tonight from Commissioners Lamath and from Tebow. I think they're, they're certainly worth inquiring about, I appreciate the suggestion.
Thank you.
Was there somebody else?
Through the chair.
Orlando?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I don't recall discussion regarding establishing funding for the repairs, and if we have not, being that we are almost into the next budget year, where would those funds be derived if we were to start repairs immediately? where would those funds be derived if we were to start repairs immediately?
Well, again, I think not putting the cart before the horse. But if that is, seems like a good course of action, I would try to get you that, a, as much advance warning of that as possible. So I don't envy your jobs, folks, but yeah, we would, we would need to.
We would have to.
We'd have to come up with it.
We'd have to borrow.
We'd have to borrow, I guess, is what I'm hearing from the chairman here.
Hi, Mr. Chair, this is Brittany Barney. I honestly don't know what everybody's talking about. So is there any way you can give me like a quick rundown on what this problem is? And for anyone else that's listening that's unfamiliar? Because I'm wondering why
Yeah.
it would be something that would be fixed now? I mean, if it was something that should have been fixed because kids are out of school, wouldn't it already be a priority going into the summer? I mean, I don't know. So I'm just unfamiliar with the.
Sure. That, the short answer is it's a design issue. And the way that some of the components were assembled and they don't seem to work right. We had a similar project on West Bristol and with different contractors and it all worked out fine. But
We'll get to, yeah.
The chairman, the chairman has offered to give you a good summary of that. It's, it's quite involved and offline would probably be the best way to handle that.
One more question on this project or this situation.
Okay, so before we move to Maria O'Brien, Councilman Barney, Chairman Smith is going to get with you and provide you with the background so that moving forward, you know where we were and where we need to go. And I'm sure there's probably an executive summary that we could provide her as well. I don't know if Councilman Rosado, if you have, are you up to date with the Green Hills thing? Okay, so probably to the newer councilmen that weren't here at that time, we could get maybe a one pager in terms of this whole saga.
Sure.
And any Board of Finance commissioners who might want to look at that or at least keep it in their file as well will be happy to supply that.
Yeah, if you really want an eye opener, go onto the docket.
I know. Okay, so back to the Board of Finance. Marie, you had one more question or was that somebody else?
Yes, I, it was, it was me. I'm wondering if, Mayor, we might call into CHIFA, which is the state's bonding authority for educational facilities. I know that K through 12 system is handled a little bit differently, but CHIFA did do something fairly innovative, I believe for the hospitals just a few years back. And they are, again, in this very unusual year, they have quite a bit of authority and can in fact possibly even step in, not just for Bristol reform, maybe a number of other school systems statewide that are gonna be facing reopening of the schools. And we want our school systems to be focused and be ready and the facilities to be ready for, for our scholars and our teachers and administrators and parents and everyone when, when they can be. But it may be the CHIFA can be utilized to take on the role here, thereby kind of moving it out of our legal obligation and standing, come up with some way to fund whatever the changes that are needed at the school, have that funding come to the city, have that, have a prepared be made. And then, you know, sort of put it at the CHIFA level where they are used to dealing with a number of these cases, but at a wider platform. Just a suggestion, but obviously trying to find a way to kind of ease the burden for, for the city and for, for all of us here. Thank you.
Yep, I think those are all good points. Probably better suited for a longer conversation at the Board of Finance meeting so we can start talking about all of our options with our staff as well as anything that might be coming through the state or other agencies for relief, especially in relation to if we do decide to go in the direction of pursuing repairs sooner rather than later. Are there any other questions concerning Green Hills for Attorney Clift? Or actually any other business to come before the joint meeting? Because we are at that point in the agenda as well. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are going to take a very brief two-minute break to re, uh, social distance the city council for the next meeting. Scott, do they have to call in or is this a continuous meeting? So this is a continuous WebEx. So those of you who would like to continue to join us as we morph into our city council meeting, please stay on the line. If you are going to leave the joint meeting and not stay for the city council meeting, you can disconnect your call. Thank you. The time is now 7:22. And we are gonna call to order the regular meeting of the city council for Tuesday, May 12. In the council chambers, I'd like to ask those that are online to please mute their microphones. And we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This month, our moment of reflection is similar to that of last month. As of today at four o'clock, we have 443 members of our community who have COVID positive test results. And we have lost almost 60 members to this disease. So a moment of silence for those who are suffering and a moment of reflection for those in recovery, as well as for the ones that we have lost. Thank you. The next item on our agenda are the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting from April 14th, 2020.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion on the minutes as presented. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is public participation. So we're going to go to our WebEx participants, of which there are 21 showing on the screen. Is there anyone that is on the call or video conferencing in that would like to address the members of the city council during public participation? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to announcements, starting with those in chambers. Councilman Han, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I have one. I'd just like to mention that we're into the census now. And although we have other priorities and other things going on, I want to make sure we don't lose the importance of the basis for the census is funding for the city of Bristol. And with the COVID-19 impact, some deadlines have changed. The overall census will now be done by October 31st. It was July 31st. And if you do not respond by mail or online, you are going to get a visit from a census taker starting on August 11th. And that was moved from May 13th. As of now, you can still go to www.2020census.gov and do it online. And that's the easiest way to do it. So please don't forget the census. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Rosado, any announcements? Councilman Proleski.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one brief one. I get questions from time to time about charitable giving, you know? Especially now with the pandemic, there have been questions about how we can help our neighbors and things. And one of the things I encourage people to do is to check out the beneficiaries very carefully if you're not going to contribute locally. We try to encourage local giving because there's a lot of things we could do within our community. The other thing to let you know is if you're really looking for resources, I would encourage you to call or go on the website for the United Way of West Central Connecticut, Donna Osuch and her team. They do a needs assessment for what's needed in the community and they do a very nice job. Or the Main Street Community Foundation. Or call a council representative and we may be able to answer some questions and lead you in the right direction. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Fortier? Okay. To the screen, Councilman Kelly, any announcements?
I do not, thank you.
Councilwoman Barney?
Yep, I have one quick announcement that the United Way is holding a food drive on Wednesday, May 20th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And on Thursday, May 21st, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. They're accepting cans or money donations. You can donate those to the United Way office in Bristol or to the Terryville Triple I.
Great, thank you. This is a critical issue because a lot of our food pantries are doing a lot of work over the last month. So if everybody could spread the word about this food drive, it is actually scheduled to take place and replace the Letter Carriers food drive, which was not held this year, and to replenish all of our food pantries and all the work that they're doing to keep food in the community. Thank you, Councilwoman Barney. No other announcements, we will move on to the consent calendar. There are a couple of items that we need to address from a technical standpoint. The first one, let's see, Councilman Proleski, you had one you wanted to pull off?
Thank you, Your Honor. Can we please pull off 5L?
The Memorial Boulevard Construction Manager.
Your Honor, I'd like to make that part of our committee report.
Okay, so motion by Councilman Proleski to remove item 5L and move it to the Memorial Boulevard report that is coming later in the agenda. So it will no longer be part of the consent calendar. Is there a second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Rosado, were you looking to pull something off?
Yes, I'd like to take off 5M.
Okay.
To accept and place on file the report for a phased and senior property tax relief program with the income limitation of $0 to $50,000.
Okay, so we will pull 5M off as well. Motion by Rosado, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Why don't we handle that one first? Councilman Rosado, would you please read the new motion associated with 5M?
Sure. I hereby move that the city accept, approve, and implement the senior tax relief program, recommendations of the Board of Finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a clarification, obviously, because the proposed budget recommendations are incorporating these income limits, which were not originally spelled out in the senior property tax relief report that was placed on file when they presented their work. So now it is clear that we are going to do $125 credit for all seniors between $0 and $50,000 annual income. There's no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the full consent agenda, which we will now need a motion for 5A through K as well as 5N.
Move to accept?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries and the consent calendar is done. Moving on to reports and committee reports, we'll go now to the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School Building Committee, as well as motion, yeah, the item 5L from the consent.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, the building committee continues to meet monthly, although now with their virtual meetings. The bids are under review and we're finishing up our lease with the Barnes Group. The lease covers a period of up to 50 years in term. Focus now continues to be on the budget, the bids, and also the finished detail. What's really interesting about the project at this time is that it's starting to take shape and, and, and look like a school in format. And it's really interesting that the composition of the committee is a very diverse group. And they've had a great deal of input in the finished product for what we'll see when the, when the school opens. The amount of detail continues, continues to be staggering, but it's going as good, I think, as it can at this point. There will be a virtual forum on, on the public school website on May 28th at 6:00 p.m. And the, there'll be an update on the school. There'll be some Memorial Boulevard alums making commentary. There'll be a review of the planned pathway for the plan of development. And there'll be a viewing of some mockups by our architects. So I think it'll be very interesting and informative and you'll get to see what the committee has come up with to date. And in addition, Your Honor, if we pulled off the contract terms for the consent agenda, I'd like to propose it now if I may. This is to amend contract 2P19-037, Construction Manager as constructor for renovations at Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Art Magnet School with DeMato and Downs, a joint venture in the amount of $8,332,505, subject to approval by the building committee and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate said contract amendment.
Councilman Proleski, well, first, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, could you just talk a little bit about what this amendment means and the money associated with it? Because for someone who may not be following the project, we just made an $8 million amendment. Okay. So this is, this is because this was on our agenda without a dollar amount because we were still working on that, right?
Thank you, yes, that's right. We, we took it off the agenda because it didn't have the dollar amount. We didn't think that was a appropriate thing to do with that kind of money.
Okay, so they're still managing the, it's, I wonder if Roger called in. It's the GMP piece of this contract that's the moving parts, right?
It is.
So, okay, so this is, there's an elasticity between, as we review the bids and as they come in, the number for the construction manager changes.
And that's what this is. This is based on the current bid, bid package.
So just for clarity, it's not additional money being added to a contract? It's just how that number moves in terms of the contract in general?
Appropriating for the detail.
Okay. Are there any other questions or concerns about the motion that has been brought forward as part of the Memorial Boulevard Arts Magnet School report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Starting with committee reports on my far left, Councilman Fortier, do you have any committee reports?
None for me, thank you.
Any other committee reports, Councilman Proleski?
Yeah, one, Your Honor. I just want to give the committee, the council, a, a brief update on the South Side School HVAC replacement project. The committee has received the bids. As a matter of fact, later on in our agenda, you'll see that we're going to, or we didn't consent agenda. We approved the contract to a Farmington group called Allstate Mechanical in the amount of three, the contract's for $3.5 million with soft costs. Right now, it looks like we're about $240,000 under budget. We're gonna keep that within the contingency plan for now. And just, just in case there's some surprises, as there's some asbestos and some hazardous materials that'd be part of the project. The project will start in either late May or early June and will, and should be completed in August. So if the schools do start up in session in September, we should be ready. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Rosado?
Yes, I do. Um, I just want to remind everyone, tomorrow, May 13th, Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services, we have in a virtual public meeting on the Parks Master Plan from 6:00 to 7:00. Visit Bristol Parks and Rec for the Zoom details. It's a great opportunity for the members of the community to learn more about the planning process and to weigh in on the future of the parks. This week is the National Law Enforcement Week and National Law Enforcement Day is actually Friday, May 15th. This Thursday, we're, we will be swearing in four new police officers at City.
For social distancing purposes, it's outside in the north lobby.
And on behalf of the Veterans Council today, we, I just attended a first salute for Chris Malafon, a resident of Bristol, who just graduated from the Officer Candidate School in Rhode Island. So we're excited to see positivity taking place in our community.
In terms of the police hirings, we are now almost back to 122 of minimum manpower. We hired three women and one man, who is actually certified. So he'll be coming on and doing the field training program almost immediately. And the three women will be attending the New Britain Police Academy together, starting on Friday. Okay, Councilman Han?
Just one, Your Honor. On the Arts and Culture Commission has been working hard on, on the mural that, that we're looking to have done next to Webster Bank on, on Main Street. They've selected an artist and are looking at renderings of his artwork. And we'll, we're looking to have that go up in the late spring, early summer. So as you go down Main Street, you'll be able to see it go up. It's going It's going to be a very, very large mural celebrating Bristol, so please look for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly, any committee reports?
Yes, I have a school readiness report, Your Honor. First, the good news, the Imagination Museum of Early Learning was recently reaccredited by NIAAC, which is the National Association for the Education of Young Children, and they're accredited until July 1, 2025, and they received outstanding scores. There's 10 standards. They received 109 of those standards and 99 in the other standard. So congratulations to Coral Richardson and her staff for a job well done. And the school readiness program under the Office of Early Childhood Education recently was alerted to their coronavirus memo number 17, which grants them to receive their school readiness funds till the end of the fiscal year of March 2020 levels. And this will assist the program to stay afloat and be ready to open when it is deemed safe for both the staff and students. And in these trying times, the OEC has agreed to put forward the second year of the school readiness grant as a continuation of the services provided the first year, and they relaxed the requirement of the new RFP to be submitted. And this is going to be very helpful to the city and the community, as the grant will continue next year uninterrupted as the same level of this previous year. And the school readiness programs unfortunately are closed at this time, but looking forward to when they can reopen, when it is safe for their staff and families. And they are presently coming up with a unified plan and having it reviewed by Marco Palmieri, the Director of the Bristol Burlington Health District. And the Bristol Board of Education Pre-K Program is part of the distance learning. And the Board of Education started their online kindergarten registration on April 20, 2020, and you can also pick up a hard copy of the registration packet at any of the food distribution sites. And as we do every year, we encourage parents to register their children for kindergarten as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. Is that your only report?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Councilwoman Barney?
Yep, I have one, just a quick report from the Bristol Public Library. They've been doing a great job managing during the pandemic and finding ways to bring services to people. I'll talk more about that later. But the Bristol Public Library is now taking back returns, so if you've had a stack of library books that need to go back, you can bring them back. Returns are optional, though, because they're not going to be charging late fees at this time, so if you still have things that you don't feel comfortable bringing out, you can definitely hold on to them until you receive more notice. Last but not least, just to bring out the best, they are being cautious. They are quarantining the books that are returned for a certain period of time to make sure that everything is safe and sanitized. So that's my only report for tonight.
Great, thank you.
Your Honor, may I introduce one more, please?
Okay, back to Councilman Proleski.
I apologize. There's a eight-minute addition from the Ordinance Committee. The Ordinance Committee has proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances pertaining to Chapter 15, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, and this calls for a public hearing. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, June 2, 2018, at 4:50 PM in the first-floor Meeting Room, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordinance Committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by the city charter. Thank you, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, last call for committee reports? All right, moving on, do any council members have unfinished business? Councilman Kelly or Councilwoman Barney, any unfinished business? Okay. Moving on, okay, moving on to new business. We have the update on the coronavirus response from the city. I will start off, and I will ask council members if you have committees to which you are the liaison, and there are activities related to the coronavirus, if you could just put your thoughts together on that, and we can maybe just have a brief conversation about how some of the departments are handling some of this, so that it's not just me talking. I'm just going to remind everybody that we, as a city, meet every Tuesday morning in a larger group that also includes the First Luckman of Burlington, because he is part of the Bristol Burlington Health District. We often have some of our larger stakeholders from the community join that call, such as ESPN or Bristol Hospital, in order to coordinate response, share resources, and most importantly, share information. We did that this morning as well, at which point Mr. Palmieri did report that there is a decline in new cases, and there is also a decline in deaths during the last two-week period. However, that, as much as that is a bright spot, it is not a large enough data pool for us to start feeling too comfortable in terms of what that means for that data set. But it probably does indicate that we are moving in the right direction. So we have been working with many of our employee groups in order to protect them. We have only had two positives throughout the entire city side, which I think is excellent. Both of our employees have recovered, neither is back at work because we are operating out of an abundance of caution. One was here in this building, and another one was at an outside facility with outside workers. So we are continuing to do all of that in terms of protection. Our emergency management director is coordinating some of the responses that we get from the regional, as well as the state, emergency planning and management, and he often will make a trip to pick up personal protective equipment as it becomes available from both the Federal Reserve or any other type of supply chain that we can identify. One recent one that we have hooked into in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce is CBIA, and Hartford has received a supply of masks that they are distributing via the Chambers of Commerce and local municipalities to manufacturing entities, most of whom are still at work. So we've been helping the Chamber with that, and Justin Mally is using it as an opportunity to meet and greet with those companies that come to the Chamber and touch base with them on how they're faring during this epidemic. We are also using that personal protective equipment to make sure that the frontline workers and responders have everything that they need, and now we have supplies within City Hall as well. The Board of Education shared with us this morning that they are in the midst of planning appropriate graduation ceremonies and really doing whatever they can to blunt the impact of what has been a senior year that nobody could have envisioned. They're also arranging access to the schools for students to retrieve belongings, and they're distributing Scholastic books for students, as well as Chromebooks to all the high school students, and that was via funds that have been received from the Dalio Foundation. So the CERT team actually has been a part of the Board of Education food distribution as well, so there's a great level of cooperation between those departments. The CERT team are at all seven of the sites, ensuring pedestrian and traffic safety as people come to pick up the lunches and breakfasts. And I don't know what the number was after last Friday, but the week before, it was over 104,000 meals served in the last six weeks, which is quite an accomplishment. I'll let Mary Fortier chime in on some of that, because she's been the point person on some of our volunteer activities.
For those of you that aren't aware, the Board of Education started distributing lunches at the two high schools when schools first closed. As everyone knows, many of our students receive free and reduced lunch at school. The funding was still in place for that, but we had to distribute the lunches because the kids weren't going to school. And because those two high school sites were somewhat overwhelmed by the numbers they were seeing, they opened five more additional sites, and the city helped provide volunteers. Some of those volunteers are, in fact, our teachers when they can do so, because many of them are involved in distance learning, but they are sometimes able to take breaks and help us distribute those lunches. We're at Huntington Woods, Cambridge Park, Lilian Road, Rockwell Park, and Sean Drive, I believe. Is that five?
Yeah.
So at those five sites, lunches are served at different times. The truck from the Board of Education comes to the sites, and folks set up the tables, and we socially distance, wear our masks, put the lunches out for families to pick up. And it is going very smoothly. Our volunteers have really stuck with it. You know, it was something I think they might have thought this was going to be a few weeks when we first started, and we're into week seven or eight, and it's going very well. And we're very grateful that, the weather's warming up a little bit. And as Ellen said, our CERT team does follow that truck around, the two trucks, I guess, that go to the different sites, and helps to direct traffic so that people go in one direction and we don't have any accidents as a result of our lunch pickups. One other item related to the coronavirus situation, I am on the water board, or the liaison to the water board, and Rob Longo does report that our water bills for April and May are coming in on track seemingly very normally, so we're very grateful. We're hoping that that means that perhaps the economic impact to Bristol is not as severe as we might have worried about it being, so we're grateful for that, that that won't be a huge impact, at least on the water department's side.
And in our other conversations and a lot of our meetings, our tax collector, who is here, Anne Bednais, has also indicated her confidence level is hopefully going to show that her collection rate might stay steady, which is an excellent one. What were you at last year, Anne, 98.6?
Yes.
Yeah. So again, I'm paraphrasing, she's here in chambers with us, but she has said often that people in Bristol pay their taxes. So we're hoping that even if there's a slight fluctuation, we're still going to be in the upper percentile of collection rate, and we will see how that deferral impacts us as well. Okay, let's see, Councilman Rosado?
Sure. Just want to touch base with the Parks Department. The Parks Department is planning for opening some of the summer camps on June 29, as allowed by the governor. The Parks Department is also debuting a before and after care program to address those who may need care before or after the normal scheduled camp times, which are usually 9 to 3. So I believe they're just starting this to see how that goes. They are currently making modifications, implementing guidelines to comply with smaller groups, like temperature checks and things like that, to ensure the safety of all campers. The Parks Commission will meet next week to make scholarships available to families who may have been impacted by the COVID-19. These scholarships are in conjunction with the youth services. It is in the hopes of the mayor's office and the Parks Department that active playgrounds and youth sports may be part of our Phase Two opening in late June. The senior center is starting online classes like Zumba and other exercises, as well as ukulele lessons, in order to keep seniors engaged during this time. Uh huh. Not old enough for the ukulele lessons yet. They're also providing lunches that can be ordered and picked up, and with Meals on Wheels deliveries Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. People should call 860-584-7100 for more information on that service.
Okay. Councilman Han, I know I had asked you to touch base with our nonprofit community, and I don't know if you have any other committee reports, but if you wanted to just touch briefly on that?
Certainly. And speaking with the nonprofits that I have, they're interested in gowns and, like we've been providing, face masks and gloves, and that seems to be the priority. Some, such as Indian Rock, I spoke with them, and they wanted to get across the idea that they are continuing also with their summer program at Indian Rock, and it is considered childcare as well, so there could be something worked out there. So they want to continue, and you'll be hearing more about Indian Rock as we go along. But many of the nonprofits still are providing services when they don't have, when they have less resources available, monetary and people-wise. So anything that you can do to help support the nonprofits in our town, they've been very helpful, and I know they would appreciate your support.
Councilwoman Barney, we're going to bounce to you.
Okay, so once again, from the library, who have been doing a lot of work to try to make sure that people have access to their resources, they actually just announced something to the press that, starting tomorrow, Bristol residents will be able to request and pick up books and videos and other items using what they're calling the All Heart Library Grab and Go Service. So they have worked creatively to allow patrons to make requests for materials over the phone or through the library's online catalog. Patrons will be notified by phone once items are available, and then an appointment time will be set, so they can go in within that 30-minute time period to receive their checked-out, packed, and marked materials, and then they can return those back to the library. Scott Stanton, who prepared this press release, also indicated that there may be some other factors that should be communicated so that people feel comfortable taking materials or can make a decision about their comfort level with participating in this program. So just so you are aware, they are only allowing items that have been quarantined for at least 72 hours to be available for pickup. They did recommend that patrons should still, of course, social distance when picking up items and wear masks and gloves for safety. Multiple people do have access to the same entryway on any given day or appointment time, so just be aware that there could be others in the vicinity, and that items could potentially be handled by other patients while, patrons while waiting pickup. So just to be cautious, but be aware of what exactly the program is going to be like. I'm excited, I think it's going to be a great asset to the community, especially now, when we all have a lot more time to read a book. But that's it from the library's standpoint.
Great, thank you. So I've left the last part for Councilwoman Kelly and Proleski, because it's going to segue into the next item, which is our Long-Term Recovery Committee, that has been advised that local governments should form from Governor Lamont. So over the last few weeks, Councilwoman Kelly has been calling restaurants and hair salons, getting a feel for what it is that they would need and what their thoughts were on some of the initial guidance that was coming out governing what that would look like for them, Phase One, May 20. I don't know, Peter, if you could just maybe give a general overview of the sense of what those phone calls are like and the general sentiment that you're running into?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. Generally, insofar as restaurants, I'll address them first, they're cautiously optimistic. A fair, some restaurants are doing okay because they have a better setup to accommodate takeout, where others are struggling, unfortunately. Some are looking to take advantage of the outdoor dining capabilities, others just don't have the wherewithal to do that. But I would say the mood is, in some cases, frustrating, frustrated and fearful, in other cases, cautiously optimistic and looking forward to being able to reopen their business at some percentage. Insofar as hair salons, I stopped calling the nail salons when it was decided they were not going to reopen, but the women I've spoken to, mainly women, one gentleman I spoke to today, but they, they're very resilient, they're cautiously optimistic as well, but extremely organized, and in some cases frustrated because the supplies they need that are mandated to reopen aren't available. So, you know, we're trying to help them with face masks, insofar as that's concerned, but, you know, we are limited in what supplies we have available to us to assist these hair salons. But I'd say, in both cases, restaurants and the hair salons, they're looking forward to return to some sense of normalcy and are cautiously optimistic about what lays ahead.
Okay. So internally, we're trying to prepare for what May 20 may look like, and we're talking about doing an internal work group so that we can expedite any of those issues that would arise, especially from the outside dining component. So fire marshal involvement, if there's tents that are going to be involved, building and zoning for site plan issues. and zoning for site plan issues, police from a traffic perspective, that they could look at parking and right-of-way issues. And who am I missing? Planning, who am I missing? Justin? Health. And health is the big one because a lot of the guidance that's been issued so far is really covering all of those requirements. So we're looking to kind of replicate what we do internally with our Site Plan Committee, where we take a first look and give some advisory opinions out. And we're going to maybe take this on the road so that it could almost be like a one-stop shopping. So if XYZ Restaurant is interested in doing an opening for outside dining, we can work with them right at the onset. One piece of good news, I think, who had it? Attorney Conlon had it this morning. The Liquor Commission is actually ahead of the curve here, and they're modifying their liquor permit process so that it's going to be a very easy one step for restaurants to amend their existing permit and add a patio license. So that, there's no charge for that, and it's actually a pretty simple piece of paperwork. So that's kind of that piece of all-encompassing, kind of like a toolkit that we're going to create and really actually go out on the business visit. So, Councilwoman Kelly, the list of those restaurants that have indicated to you that they're interested in examining the opportunities for outside dining, if you could get that to us, we're going to start there so that we'll be ready before May 20th for that. However, since there is not executive order guidance on that yet, we also have a opportunity to kind of get ahead of the curve a little bit as a Plan B. And in talking with the attorneys and Justin and our Public Works Director this morning, we thought that it would be appropriate to have that Plan B in the form of doing something on our own for our zoning amendments. So I think I sent that amendment to you, Councilwoman Kelly, if you could read it, and then we could discuss it.
Yes, I do, Your Honor. I have a motion authorizing the mayor to file a zoning application to facilitate outdoor restaurant dining. And it reads, "I hereby move authorization for the city to initiate a proposal to amend the Bristol zoning regulation that facilitates the approval of temporary outdoor dining associated with restaurants or similar eating or drinking establishments for the duration of the COVID-19 emergency. I further move that the Mayor Ellen Zapo Sasu or Acting Mayor be authorized to sign any and all documents necessary and proper to carry out the purpose of this motion."
Is there a second for discussion purposes?
Second.
Okay. For discussion purposes, we've discovered that we have the opportunity within the downtown zone to do a lot of outside dining. That does not extend to restaurants outside of downtown. So that was one barrier that we needed to deal with. The other issue is we do have opportunities, I don't know how to describe this, in terms of if we don't get what we need from the executive orders, this will allow us to move further a little quicker. And it's also something that's designed to, again, talk about that piece of coordinating our resources and allowing these people to get what they need to open sooner rather than later. I don't know if Attorney Clift or any of the attorneys that were part of this, anybody want to add to this, but, I mean, it's really just something to have in place. There is a zoning commission meeting tomorrow night. We really want to get it in process because if there is anything that has to be tweaked a little bit for any of these outside dining opportunities, by having this in place, we can actually almost forestall enforcement as well as we work out some of those kinks. And that was important to us as well. There would be nothing more harrowing than to have a restaurant be brave and attempt to open and then receive a zoning violation because they didn't exactly match what our language was. So that's kind of what we're thinking about. It also may become a moot point if, in fact, the executive order guidance comes out and it's something that we can work with and gives us the opportunity to do what we want to do. But if you take this and remove it from the pandemic and talk about if somebody had to come in and make an adjustment because they wanted to do outside dining and they were not in the downtown zone, that could be one or two months delay, once you go through the application process and have your public hearing and have your planning or zoning act on that application. So that's what we're trying to avoid by having this as a safeguard. Does that make sense?
Perfect sense.
Okay. So the motion has been made by Councilwoman Kelly and seconded. Does anybody have any other questions or concerns?
Your Honor, I think we have to make it very clear, though, because the devil's in the details, and oftentimes staff gets caught up in details, that it's expressly put into our minutes that the council and the mayor are trying to, the intent here is to move it along and that we would encourage a very quick response to these applications so that there's no fussing around. You understand, Attorney Clift?
I don't think Attorney Clift's the problem.
No, no. He's the enforcer, though.
You're right. You are correct. I think what the mayor alluded to is that you've got a restaurant that would like to conduct outdoor dining, you know, because that's the only way they can have any sort of a business. And in order to get that, the procedure right now is somewhat involved, where we have not drafted the actual proposal yet for the amendment. So the motion is rather flexible on how we accomplish it. But the goals that we have are, as you stated, Councilman Proleski, we would like to amend the zoning regulations to permit an expedited process, maybe almost an administrative review by health, probably police, fire marshal.
Building and zoning.
And zoning. An expedited procedure and allow for certain flexibility when you've got a couple of, like one of the examples the mayor was talking about in our initial meeting on this, you have some restaurants that maybe share a parking lot and they can work out something. So, again, we're trying to provide flexibility. It's temporary, it's seasonal, but it's something that I think is needed. We are hoping that there will be some, you know, some action by the governor. And I don't know, I'm still debating, are we going to bring that up at his conference on Wednesday?
I think we probably should. So we do have a month, a weekly, call on Wednesday afternoons with the governor. And we've not, Bristol has not asked a question yet because most of what we've needed has been included, but I think that this might be one. We've also been petitioned by the Hartford County Tattoo. You know, they are set up to have an abundance of caution in their daily operations, even before COVID, in terms of the contact that they have with their customers. So they were excluded from Phase One. I believe there are two, and there may possibly be a third parlor in Bristol, and we're going to see if we can get some guidance as to when they could possibly be brought on as well. They are set up to have one-on-one by appointment. They do not have the volume that hair salons do, so it's, you know, concerning that they weren't included because there had been some original discussion that they were going to be. So we have two possible questions in terms of that. Yeah.
Your Honor, if I could mention, I did review their policies and procedures, and they look really clean, a lot safer than actually some of the salons, so.
Right.
There's no reason.
I'm sorry. When other people are speaking in chambers, could they try to speak a little bit closer to the microphone? It's just, it's hard to hear on the WebEx, and a couple of people have mentioned that. So I apologize, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that we couldn't hear too well.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry. So I'm sorry, Councilman Rosado for interrupting.
No problem. You're good. Is that loud enough?
Okay. So, so far, we're looking for guidance for our tattoo parlors, as well as when we could expect from the governor and what type of guidance would be coming.
Right. Right now, we are under the zoning enabling acts. We have to initiate and follow the zoning regulations that we've adopted. So we're looking for possibly some relief where some of those stringent guidelines could be, you know, alleviated. And maybe there's something that they're already working on. But I think this is a good Plan B that we're going to come up with.
And just to be clear, we're not looking to cut corners on any existing safety, food handling, or any of that. It's just a matter of leveraging these resources to get it happening sooner than later. Segue into Item B, which is our Long-Term Recovery Committee. Councilman Proleski has been heading that up, and I'll have him start. Want to talk about some of the items that we've been discussing?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, the, we received an advisory from the governor encouraging locals, municipalities and towns to start a committee with local input for restarting the economy, restarting business. So what we've been meeting, and the mayor's asked for input, for including important parts of the city to be part of our committee. And this is not an exhaustive list, but we're approaching the medical field, banking, nonprofits, housing, the religious community, education, restaurants, salons, barber shops, transportation. And we're open for suggestions, but that's something we'll be working on, and we can report back at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Your Honor, there was no vote on the...
I was wondering about that. The restaurant motion, the zoning application? What? No, we didn't vote. That's what she's telling us. Okay, so...
But it was seconded, correct?
Okay. The motion was made and seconded, but we failed to actually execute the vote. So all in favor of the motion authorizing the mayor to file the zoning application to facilitate outdoor restaurant dining?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Therese. So the Long-Term Recovery Committee is going to be something that we continue to pursue, of course, because there's, it's never good enough to just have one committee. The Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments is also having a task force, and they've been given the responsibility from state government to interact with the local committees. So they asked us for names as well. Many of the people that we had already earmarked would prefer to stay at the local level. So for the Nogatuck Valley Liaison from Bristol, I'm going to be appointing Councilwoman Peter Kelly to serve on that, an interface between us and them. The meetings are in Waterbury, which I knew he would be excited about. So then, we also have Cindy Bombard from the Chamber, who has been asked to sit on another one, first specific to Connecticut small businesses, that is going to be chaired by the CEO of the Capital Region Cog. So she is on that, and we are going to be sharing information with her as well. So over the next, hopefully, four to six weeks, we'll have, we'll see a lot more lights on in some of our businesses, and all of our departments will be behind that when it's appropriate to do so. Are there any other suggestions or concerns or comments? Okay. Moving on to resignations, do we have any, Therese?
We do. There are two resignations. The first is from Amanda Sawyer from the Bristol School Readiness Council. And then we have an older one from the mayor's task force on AIDS, and it is from Heidi Joseph.
Okay. Both of them are moving on to new positions, so it would be appropriate to accept the resignation and send a letter of thanks. Could somebody make that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointments. There are just a couple for tonight. For Acting Mayor, I'm going to appoint Peter Kelly to replace Greg Han for the next three-month term to August of 2020. That is a mayor's appointment. The next item are the City Arts and Culture Commission, and it is to reappoint both Samantha Klutier and Juliet Norton for three-year terms to April of 2023. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next two are mayor's appointments for the Inland Wetlands Commission. The first one is to reappoint Zachary Fisk, who is currently serving as chair, to a three-year term to May of 2023. And the second one is to reappoint Michael Robinson for a three-year term to May of 2023. Moving on, we have three appointments to the Bristol Parking Authority. The first is to reappoint Todd LaRue for a three-year term to April of 2022. The next one is to reappoint Mike Mazzarelli for a three-year term to April of 2023, and to reappoint Andrea Adams, three-year term, April 2023. May I please have a motion for those three?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So at this point, that leaves vacancies. We have one on the Bristol Historic District Commission because we promoted an alternate. So there is an alternate seat. We have a zoning board of appeals vacancy. That person must be unaffiliated, Democrat, independent, or minor party. And we have a zoning commission alternate position. That, too, must be a Democrat, unaffiliated, or a minor party. Those are the three vacancies that are currently on our boards and commissions. Anybody who is interested can send a letter to the mayor's office for consideration. Okay. Moving on to Item 11, I am going to turn the council meeting over to Councilwoman Fortier for the handling of Item 11 because Councilman Proleski and I must recuse ourselves because we signed conflict statements for the CDBG applications that came in this year due to our close relationship with one or more of those applicants. So we are going to recuse ourselves, and we will be back for 12.
For Item 11, there is a resolution, which I'm going to read, but before I do, I'm going to list how the CDBG fund allocation was voted on by the Bristol Development, what's it called now, Justin? The Economic and Community Development Board. Thank you. This year, the total Bristol CDBG fund allocation is $728,689. And the funds will be allocated as follows: to the Prudence Cranial Shelter, $7,467; to the Family Resource Centers, $3,000; to HRA for their case manager, $20,000; to Agape House, $11,000; to Salvation Army, $7,000; St. Vincent de Paul Homeless Shelter, $25,000; United Way Summer Youth Employment Program, $4,000; Bristol Boys and Girls Club at Cambridge Park, $23,000; for public facilities, capital projects, City of Bristol sidewalks in the Opportunity Zone, $50,000; Comanetsky Estates Congregate Housing, $20,000; Disabled American Veterans ADA Accessibility, $25,000; Imagination Leak Repairs, $10,000; New England Carousel Museum Safety Lighting, $15,000; and for the administration of the program, including the Housing Rehabilitation Program, $239,584; support staff, $110,263; income from the program, $17,910; planning and administration, $99,465; and reprogrammed funds towards economic development, $41,000, for the total of $728,689. And now I'll read the resolution. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan 2020-2021, as approved by the Board of Economic and Community Development at its May 7, 2020, meeting, is hereby approved and authorized the mayor or acting mayor to sign any necessary documents and certifications, and be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for the appropriation of funds as designated by the ECD Policy Committee. Could someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? It is a resolution. I'm going to start with the folks that are online. I'll start with Councilwoman Barney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Councilman Han.
Yes.
Councilman Rosado.
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. Resolution passes. And we'll wait for the other council members to come back, and Mayor Zapo can resume the chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fortier. Item 12 is another resolution, and it's regarding the approval of the five-year consolidated plan. Councilwoman Fortier?
Yes. And as with the previous motion, I'm going to read what those goals are for the consolidated plan, and then I will read the resolution. The 2020 through 2025 consolidated plan goals for 2020 through 2024. Item 1, support access to decent, safe, and affordable housing for Bristol residents. A, by funding the Housing Rehabilitation Program for low-moderate-income single and multifamily homeowners for code enforcement upgrades and essential home improvements such as boilers/furnaces, window and roof replacements, that also increase energy efficiency and may help eliminate blight and improve safety, and increasing the health and safety of families with lead testing and abatement when needed. B, by supporting organizations that provide housing and supportive programs for homeless individuals and families, at-risk youth, and people with special needs. Item 2, support public service programs that advance community needs and focus on youth, the elderly, and special needs populations. A, encourage health and wellness initiatives such as health services, food distribution, and access to recovery and mental health services. B, support the expansion of services for neglected, abused children, and improved access to physical and mental health facilities for children and youth at risk, especially those with special needs. Three, support infrastructure and facility improvements, blight reduction, and community revitalization activities, especially in the Opportunity Zone and low-moderate-income areas of the city. Four, support economic development initiatives that include job training, workforce development, and ESL/GED programs. Those are the goals, and the resolution is as follows: be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the five-year consolidated plan for 2020-2024, as approved by the Economic and Community Development Board at its May 7, 2020 meeting, is hereby approved and authorized the mayor or acting mayor to sign any necessary documents and certifications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, we'll start with Councilwoman Fortier for the roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Councilwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the five-year consolidated plan is approved. The last item on our agenda tonight is an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation matter of Fred Haynes versus the City of Bristol, PMA Claim Number W-001289470. For clarification, Mr. Haynes is a Board of Education employee. Who will be coming into this executive session?
Besides myself, it'll be Assistant Corp. Counselors Steg and Lacy, and we will also be joined remotely by Attorney, Special Counsel Eric Bartlett. That's E-R-I-K-B-A-R-T-L-E-T-T, and he's our special counsel, so he'll be joining us by conference phone.
Okay. So we need a motion to convene into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Councilwoman Barney and Councilman Kelly, I have provided you with the call-in information for the executive session, so you can go to that now, and we will see you back in executive session. We need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let the record show that no votes were taken while in executive session. Are there any motions to come before us?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a motion. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement of any and all workers' compensation claims in the matter of Fred Haynes versus the City of Bristol, Claim Number W-001289470, in consideration of a payment of $90,000. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There is no other business to come before the city council. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good night, everyone.[1785.97][1785.97][music]